Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, January 31st, 2011. It's on or about 7:00 PM. This evening, City Council will have a short Finance and Personnel Committee between 7:00 and 7:15 sharp. And at 7:15 sharp, we will be moving into a special session of Athens City Council. Finance and Personnel Co-Chair Nancy Bane.
Mr. President, it is a problem. We're talking about one-tenth of our general fund budget. It may warrant more than 15 minutes.
Well, then, at the end of the council session, we will go back into it.
Well, then, it'll be all a moot point. Okay, so those of you who follow the news know that among the various problems that we may be facing in the next few years will be permanent ones. We're hoping some of them will be temporary. On the 15th of March will be the first budget information coming out. And the new biennium for Ohio University almost certainly represents some losses in our current funding. But more importantly, are two proposals from the current House of Representatives that have very, very important implications for us. And I would first of all like to thank Ray Hazlett from the Auditor's Office for putting the numbers together that you have in front of you. Estate taxes, sometimes called inheritance taxes, would be the first column. And you can go to the State Department of Taxation, look and see what it comes from. Basically, this came out of the presidential term of McKinley. Maybe he was the governor at that time. In other words, it's a progressive era, good government thing that is about or proposed to be ended. Now, I'm, I think if you look, you'll see we're talking about over a five-year, six-year period, 1.6 million roughly that came to us under this. Stopping it right now in very difficult financial times seems even more dramatic in its impact. And I hope those of you who are out there and watching this as you channel surf might pick up your computer keyboard and send a letter to the two people we'll be focusing on in a moment. But notice, this is about 2.48 part of our average general fund amounts. And then, local government funds came out of the 1880s. In other words, they've been a part of that good government component that was part of the progressive era one more time. And local government funds are four, or five, six taxes that are collected by the state, including sales tax. And they give a part of it to the county and a part of it to cities that have income taxes. Notice that the impact of losing these funds will be very substantial, 7.3 percent of our, of our any given year general fund. Now, it varies. You can see the local government funds have gone up and come down because general revenue taxes from the state are one of the major bases for how much is there and then how much is distributed. But this would indeed be a very, very big blow to us before we've even found the cutbacks out. So together, you see, Ray wrote, "The state taxes and local government funds represent nearly 10% of the general fund revenue," which is how we fire, we fund police, fire, and other different entities. So proposal is from all members of council, we have a resolution, O411. If you take a look at it, it's on pay, at the end of your pagination you have there. And we have a resolution urging the General Assembly to curtail cuts to local government funds recognizing in there it will have a negative impact on Ohio's community. And opposing Ohio Bill 3, already has a number, that doesn't, that looks pretty ominous, to eliminate the Ohio estate tax. And then you can see some of the wherethes. And I once again have to thank our priceless and totally helpful Debbie Walker for helping us with this. I wouldn't have known it was House Bill 3 at all, but I do appreciate all of her attention. And she actually will proceed with this and send it to certain other entities. 10%, I mean, it's hard to even fathom what it would mean. Okay, so look at the, we're telling them 10% of the general revenue fund. House Bill 3 is sponsored by Sherrod Grossman and Jay Honiger, who used to be a rep for this area. Maybe we need to write to him, too. January 1st, 2011, so we'll have a bit of a rest, but if it goes through. And there's, used to fund police and fire services. And without it, of course, we're going to have to do some serious cutting even without OU's loss. I don't want to seem like I'm in a separate reality from the, oh, my goodness, we have so many things we want to do component of city life. But we've cut back in, this administration has, two years ago figured out, not everybody should be taking a vehicle home and stop that and travel and all the rest of the things. And, you know, there's not much left to cut. I'm sure a few things, but, you know, it's, there, this is very, very serious. Forty, then we can thank Chris Fall for this one, approximately 47% of the property in the city of Athens is tax exempt, and even more will be shortly, I guess. And impacts fees paid by the state to offset this exempt property have declined significantly. And so we're asking them to, and with each of us signing it, we're going to have Debbie certify it and send it to them, Ohio General Assembly, to recognize the negative impact reduction local government funds will have. And we're asking it to, asking Debbie to send it to two people that represent us. Both had their start in city council. One sat here and the other one sat over there. And that would be Debbie Phillips, our state rep for the most of us. And the other one is Jimmy Stewart, who has way more power than he used to have when he was first ward rep. Where he, and he is my majority whip. And we have-
In the state senate.
The state senate, yeah. And now, and we need to have both, and I think they are aware of it, but we need to really, maybe let's use the word calm out and say, "Come on, you ought to start with us. Don't make us go through this pain and anguish." Anyway, that's where we are. And so I'm going to ask your support on this. That's one of the reasons why we're here. Now, since we have nine more minutes, I'm going to turn it over to Sherrod.
Thank you. I'd like to have a brief discussion regarding sending a resolution to President McDavis asking OU to contribute toward the purchase of our ladder truck. If they could just contribute $50,000 a year for the next five years, that would help us tremendously. It would help us make the payments. So how do you all feel about that? Would you like to do that?
Yes.
Anybody that doesn't want to?
I think that should be pointed out, and when you look at the maps, about 85% of the buildings that the ladder truck will be potentially responding to is on campus. Also, I think that when you look at other costs that the city covers when it comes to the university, that is extraordinarily nice of us only asking $50,000 a year, seeing how-
Exactly. We're not, we're not asking for 85%.
Right. Well, also the fact that our tax, the tax exemption, you know, they're going to be asking for more properties to be exempt. There are a large number of properties to be exempt that their impact fee that the state has paid has gone down significantly over the past few years to pay for those properties. And I think that this makes a lot of sense. I support it.
Anybody, anybody? Oh, Kent, we were talking last week, and Kent mentioned that, or Member Butler mentioned, that OU could possibly ask their alumni for donations. And of course, they are already asking their alumni for many things, but I think this will help get the word out. So if you're all in agreement with that, we'll go forward with the resolution.
Next week.
Next week. Oh, yes, Member Butler.
Thank you. Yeah, I just was going to comment briefly on this issue as well. In considering this issue, too, some of the research that I conducted, I think within the past six months indicated that other university, cities, or towns have offered contributions to the community in which there's an amicable relationship to help support endeavors like this. I think, if I recall correctly, Ann Arbor, Michigan helped donate money to, I'm sorry, the University of Michigan helped donate money to Ann Arbor. I believe Kent might have done that as well for Kent State, or Kent State might have given money. So-
There's a precedent.
Yeah, it's happened. It's not as if we're trying to create something out of nothing here new that hasn't been done before, right? So I think in theory, this is worthwhile to pursue.
Okay. Ember?
And this is not something new in terms of the city's discussion with the university. I'm wondering if, when the last time was that it was discussed with President McDavis, if you know, Mayor?
I probably brought it up about six or seven times in passing. I know when I first, one of my first meetings, I think I presented the agreement between Burlington and the University of Vermont as a template and said, "This is something to think about." That was at least two or three years ago. I haven't really discussed it-
That was millions.
What?
That was millions. That was, that was a huge, or that was-
It was a million, yes.
Eight hundred, nine hundred thousand.
I think it started at like 300, 600, stopped at a million on third year, plus 180 for fire protection, I believe. Was that specifically in that? So there, there was a template, so to speak. I haven't discussed it of late, if that's what you mean.
Member Gosney? Last Thursday, I sat in on the meeting between the Service Safety Director and Ohio University. And last Thursday, the Service Safety Director and I brought it up with Harry Wyatt and the gentleman's name that attended-
Richard Schultz, probably.
No, Richard was there also, but the gentleman that was head of the insurance and risk management for the university was there. So we did bring it up with them and had a discussion and one more time, mentioned it.
I believe you had the map, too.
We did. We shared the map with them and talked about all that. So it is late as last Thursday, it's been mentioned.
Thanks. Good to hear.
Member Butler had one more?
Thank you. Yeah, and I might put the auditor on the spot to aid us with some numbers as well, because her and I had a discussion about this a couple of months ago as well. And that was the impact fee that we received from the state.
Oh.
A lot of college towns are recipients of such monies, and we've seen less and less over the years. Am I correct?
Yes, absolutely correct. It's probably half what it was when I first started, seven years ago, eight years ago.
What is it now, last year?
Like 28,000?
About 30, some 20 or 30, I think. Very, very little. I mean, it doesn't pay for half a cop.
I remember 60, Nancy. What do you remember?
60.
60 is the height of what I remember it being.
Yeah, I think it was 55 my first year, and it's gone down ever since.
Yeah.
Looking at the-
And 60 bought a lot more 22 years ago than it does today.
True.
Yeah.
And looking at the fire reports, I look at the weekly fire runs, and about a third of them are going to the university properties. Again, it's, it's, they're not, you know, something that's catastrophic most of the time, whether it's, I think there were a couple of elevators that weren't running this past week. I think at least two burnt food issues, and a couple of constructions and things like that. So there, we have a good deal of runs. Usually you average about a third to a half, depending on what's going on at the university.
And just to point a clarification with Mayor Wile, as each one of those runs are made to the units that have over the four stories, we're required to take that ladder truck there. So it might only be for burnt popcorn, but we're still sending the ladder truck out at that expense to the maintenance and the gasoline for the truck.
That's true. Nancy?
We're ramping it up, obviously. It's been in discussion many times, but until it's out in the open, it's probably, nothing will change. At least it'll be a no, and we'll know where we are with respect to the truck. But I'd like you to notice that we will, with these two losses of estate taxes and local government funds, lose as much from our budget as it would take to buy a fire truck. So, and it'll be permanent. We won't be going back there. So both of these are extremely, extremely important issues for us. Good luck, Sherrod, get it going.
Thank you.
You know, and just one more point. At a time that we are looking at all the other cuts, to eliminate two sources of revenue like this on top of it, just means ludicrous.
Yeah, and it's been 125, 30 years. I hope I'm doing my math right, almost 140 years of this funding. It's not as-
So it came into effect when you first came on council?
Yeah. Exactly. It's been a long time. I'll get you two someday.
Is that everything?
Yeah, look what time it is. You know, now we'll have to sit here.
I am so proud of you two. I really am. So let's move on into this special session of Athens City Council. And we do-
Oh, once, I did want to mention one more thing about appropriating money for the grant that Chief Troxel mentioned last, last week, the $11,000. That's a payback, it's 10% of it, so we'd be doing 1,100. I just want to reiterate, that needs to be done next time, sometime in the future.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Wile. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. This is a special session of council, which has an abbreviated agenda. Ordinances for third reading, O0111 is an ordinance authorizing the adoption of an agreement with the Athens City Firefighters Local 3351 and Ohio Council 8 AFSCIO concerning wages and working conditions, and declaring an emergency. Member Kuhn.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move to adopt 0111.
Second.
This is the agreement that was recently negotiated with the firefighters' union. And the period of time it covers, I believe, is from the fall through the fall of 2013. Did you, did the law director need to add anything?
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 411 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning code, Chapter 23.10.01 definitions and Table A, schedule of bulk controls and Title 99 definitions, Chapter 99.01.05 applied meetings of words and terms. Member Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt O411.
Second.
As stated, this is an ordinance changing bulk controls. Basically, it's stormwater management, part of the first, one of the first steps to do stormwater management for the city. Last week, we did have a discussion with the soil conservation people about the importance and the coming changes in stormwater management. And this will help us to start that process.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 411? Member Sands?
I just wanted to point out again, I know that Member Fall has talked about it earlier, that this new regulation would, would limit lot coverage to 60% where there is no limit. Now, it could, lots could be covered 100%. And this would apply to new coverages only. If a lot is already over 60%, we would not, they would be grandfathered, that's what I wanted to say.
Well, Allah, do we might go after father. Is there further discussion on, yes, Member Butler?
Thank you, sir. I wanted to share briefly that I did speak at length with our city planner, Paul Wold, about this issue. And we found that conversation very informative, as well as the information that was brought to us by Member Fall. So I do support this issue, and I think it's a proactive measure considering some of the terms we may see down the line from state. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Gosney?
Yes, and I, hearing from the planner on this, I feel confident that it will not have an impact on the ability for new construction or new buildings in the city, but will provide a better quality of life in the areas where we will see new, new construction.
Mayor Wile?
This covers, of course, does not change the 30% lot coverage for your building, garage, and deck and gazebo. Really what it's looking at is making a distinction between that and pavement and paved area. Again, with the stormwater runoff, we've had public hearings on this. We'd make you aware that there are, there's discussion about planning developments. We've got one that's on our plate right now that's trying to look at this, but of course, asking for variances or maybe not, depending on how they work it out for parking. And again, it comes down to this parking issue, which is why we're looking at this. The major impact, if you remember from the public hearings and the presentation, the major areas that gets, that is impacted is the R3 zone, for the most part. It does not really affect most, almost all the R1 zones, single-family, R2 zones duplex. It's when we start getting into the apartment complexes and the requirement, the 1997 requirement of one bedroom and one parking space, that starts bumping up against this. And again, it's still looking at the lens or the idea of trying to manage our stormwater runoff eventually. So we have to recognize you can't pave from lot end to lot end, and recognize that, that it will have an impact.
Is there further discussion? Member Bane?
From the past, not so distant past, when we were trying to fine-tune our zoning code, we actually put forward a similar, the council did, a similar proposal. At that time, stormwater was in the way distant future, if at all. And it was simply a way to control density. And I, you know, I'm voting for it mainly from that point of view, because our three zones in this town are already built out. And so, you know, I think it says, well, a density factor. I think it's, zoning does control density. You get right down to it. That's what it does. I know nobody wants me to say that because they're afraid, but there it is, the public.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of O411?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0611 is an ordinance amending, ordinance 0110 authorizing design of the Mill Street Sewer Replacement Project Number 252. Member Bane?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider 611 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that we are in the process of funding engineering on this project, which uses two years of CDBG money and some of our own street and other money. This design has to be done in time for the building season. And in order to have that happen, we have, we've already read it three times. We had to amend it. And it's a small matter, a small part of the much larger picture. Therefore, I'm asking for suspension.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move adoption of 611.
Second.
611 is a pretty substantial project that is going to be happening in a very dense area. Luckily, many of the residents will be gone and won't miss the fun of having sidewalk, street, and sewer replacement going on. But it's a major investment in one of the close-in neighborhoods, paralleling an earlier investment in storm sewer that happened, not in the street, but in another location. So we've been putting a lot of money in utilities back into close-in neighborhoods, and this is just another example of it.
Other comments? Member Fall?
Since we're doing design, I would encourage and the continuation of Andy Stone's pedestrian and traffic calming process that he has been doing in other neighborhoods, this is a perfect time to look at traffic calming and pedestrian, especially pedestrian design in that area, because it is high density, there's a huge number of pedestrians, and it's kind of a gateway into the university. So I just want to put my two cents in for that.
Mayor Wile?
I don't know about the traffic calming, but I'll perk it up to them. I am aware that we are going to be doing sidewalks there. That's part of the assessment process that you have for the down.
What is going on right now.
I think we're talking about maybe 700 and change, 60 or 26, something like that, linear feet. So I'll, I'll put it in the, in the mix for that. And again, most of it's the infrastructure, the important stuff's the infrastructure underneath, but the road has-
But if you're tearing it up, then now is the time to be able to look at different easy things to do for pedestrian safety.
Actually, to follow up on that, I do, I'm raising my hand, that's my thing. The, the intersection where Stewart tees into Mill and where also then Palmer tees into Mill, that one is relatively somewhat dangerous, I think, and maybe raised pavement wouldn't be a bad idea there, a raised crosswalk. And it may raise the price too much, but I have, on several occasions during street tours, drug him down there and ask him to do something about it, because the traffic is, moves very fast down Mill Street now that we have signs. Minimally, a stop sign in a couple places would help. There used to be a traffic light there.
Oh, when it was cut across the river at that time?
No.
No?
No, they just took it down. I mean, it probably wasn't appropriate, given the level of-
As well as the fact that the intersection really doesn't match between the two.
No, but it did slow down the traffic going out. And so I, I mean, I do think, I echo the Chris's statement and say it is really probably something we should look at with the number of pedestrians in that area.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 0611 has been adopted. Moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 0711 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to acquire 2011 scrap tire grant funds and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the suspension is needed so that the city has time to respond to the grant deadline, which is February 4th.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 711.
Second.
Okay. This particular ordinance would authorize the Service Safety Director to submit a grant to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And the grant funds would enable the city to use scrap tire modified asphalt as part of our annual street paving program. The grant will be coordinated with a grant being submitted by the City County Health Department for a tire amnesty program. And then another grant application will be submitted by Athens Rural Action to support local businesses to manufacture scrap tire products. So the three grant applications from the city, the Health Department, and Athens Rural Action will all be coordinated. This is part of a community-wide effort to reduce our scrap waste stream.
Very good. Other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes? Member Bane?
I was, what got me last time was the coordination and the larger picture, and I asked Andy to kindly consider, and I'm satisfied with this, and I will vote for.
Are we doing just suspension?
We, no.
No, we're on the rolling.
Adoption.
Okay. So I'm satisfied that what he will do is take the 75,000, if the grant comes through, out of his regular street paving funds. And then he will get more money. I had a hard time visualizing how this was going to happen. First, I imagined some sort of melting device there, you know, that kind of thing. But what actually happens, and this is the part that is maybe a little bit, a little bit new, is that the material will be made in Toledo and then transported down here. And it will be a different amount from the amount ODOT uses. And so there's some questions about how much it would cost, should this all come through? I mean, it's a good idea, but, you know, this is relatively tough times, and we don't even know if our tax receipts will cover the amount we projected for the street rehab. That was why, from my alternative reality, I was going, "Oh, my God, no," last time. And so we did sort it out, and if it goes well, he'll have more than enough paving. And goodness knows, we do need those potholes filled out there, right? So that will double the paving amount, which is a good investment under this present set of circumstances. So I'm for it.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of O711?
Aye.
Opposed? 711 is adopted. O811 is an ordinance authorizing the design of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation Project Number 261. Again, Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant is stated in the titles for the rehabilitation of the Carriage Hill Bridge. The ordinance appropriates and authorizes 24, 20,000 for the design engineering portion. And then the work to complete the bridge will take place later this year. And this is part of a grant through the Ohio, well, it's part of a project, and through the Ohio Department of Transportation Credit Bridge Program, the expenses for this Carriage Hill Bridge will then be considered as local match for another project we'll be describing shortly, which is our 2012 Oxbow Bridge replacement.
Other comments? Member Sands?
I just wanted to point out that the Carriage Hill Bridge is actually on city property. That's part of ours. We're not doing the work for a privately owned bridge, as I understand it.
We actually own Carriage Hills Road all the way up to the top. That is actually our road.
Okay.
And this really looks like a culvert, but it's actually, because the span is considered a bridge. One of the questions, of course, that came across is how the fast to do it, because that is the only way in and out of that apartment complex. The logistics, we'll be trying to do that almost like at night and over a one-day period to tear it down and put it back up. I guess it'll be mostly prefap, the way I understand it, if we design it that way.
Very good. Any other comments? Right. Ordinance 0911 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance and ordinance 10810 authorizing design engineering of the Oxbow Bridge, which is project number 247. Member Nysley, this is a pretty big one.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, this is one of our major bridges in town and one of our five bridges. The, so this ordinance has two parts to it. of our five bridges. The, so this ordinance has two parts to it. And the first part does amend an earlier ordinance, one-twenty-ten, which was fifty thousand dollars for the design engineering phase of the project. And then, the major funds for the construction of this project will do total over two-point-five million, much of the money coming from the Ohio Department of Transportation Municipal Bridge Grant Program. The second part of this ordinance tonight amends another ordinance, one-oh-eight-ten, and that authorizes two-hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars at this time for the Oxbow project.
Other comments? You know, the one thing I think about is that one historical photo you always see around town showing the bridge when it was just being completed. And now, a major, major renovation. I, at the meeting that I sat in on with OU and the Service Safety Director last week, they were looking at making sure that that sharp curve where the fire engine is not able to make it around the corner onto-
Mulberry.
Mulberry Street will be corrected. And the coordination for the shutdown on this is phenomenal, what it's going to take. And with the pedestrian, it's going, traffic underneath and everything, it's, it's going to be a huge project. It's going to be almost as big an impact as the Richland Avenue Bridge. So, anyway.
Without a roundabout.
Without a roundabout.
You could probably use one.
That was first reading. Now, we move on to resolutions for third reading. R-oh-one, eleven, is a resolution declaring it necessary to replace a portion of the existing sidewalk and curb on Mill Street between Lash Street and North McKinley Avenue as part of the Mill Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
The mayor mentioned this earlier. We're having a very large set of improvements going on on Mill Street with the sewer, with paving. And as long as it's total chaos there, we're going to add a few sidewalks to it. And thanks to Paul Logan, Andy Stone, for discovering the sidewalks. So, this will start us in the process, so it can be done in the middle of summer, having the least impact on the people who live in that area.
Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution oh-one, eleven has been adopted. Now, on to a one-reading resolution. R-oh-four, eleven, is a resolution urging the General Assembly to curtail cuts to the local government funds, recognizing the negative, negative impact it will have on Ohio's communities, and opposing Ohio House Bill Three to eliminate the Ohio Estate Tax. This has been introduced by all members of council. Member Bain, would you like to speak to it some more?
Mr. President, I move an option of R-oh-four, eleven.
Second.
R-oh-four, eleven asks our elected representatives through submission of this signed resolution, which I hope you all stay to do, to, to not allow local government funds and not allow the estate tax to be totally cut out at this point. We're talking about a million dollars. And if we all of a sudden have six percent inflation, luckily, both of these funds, funding sources would go up. It's an ideal source of revenue, not the only source of revenue, but one that will really hurt our general fund. Now, once again, I want everyone to remember, how much of the general fund is police and fire at this point? Almost fifty percent. So, in other words, this could have very tragic consequences on the public health and safety in this community. So, we absolutely have to do our best. I'm going to shoot off a few emails after council, or maybe tomorrow, to Jimmy Stewart, our state senator, who started his career on council in Ward One, or his career as a politician in the first ward, and Debbie Phillips, who is the fourth ward rep on council as well. So, I hope the rest of the citizens of Athens will also do this and say, "We cannot, with our current situation, not even knowing how many cuts come from OU, suffer such a blow." And, you know, some kind of relief, some kind of remedy. And we trust in their good judgment, their honor for local government, and hope we can stop this.
Other comments? Yes, Member Gosling?
So, one of these proposed tax cuts is the estate's tax, which is, you know, a tax that, it's a progressive tax. And to see a proposal to cut that in a way that would directly affect our ability to provide police and fire protection to the city, it doesn't make any sense. And hopefully, there will be enough backlash statewide to prevent this from happening.
And local government even more. Oh, my God.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.